June 7, 2021 meeting to order the Honorable William V. Roddy from District 4 will lead us in invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
I must warn you, I've taken a COVID vaccine and I haven't been feeling well, so I'm certainly glad to be here tonight and good to see everyone come out to our council meeting. Let us pray. Dear Father, we thank you for allowing us to come together once again. We thank you for family, friends, and fellowship. We ask that you continue to watch over each and every one of us here this evening. We ask that you bless our service men and women. We ask that you lead us and guide us so that your will be done, so that we make the best decisions for our York County citizens and those that are surrounding. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't have the public forum list. We do not have any oath of office or any appearances, so we'll move straight into the public forum session. As we move into the public forum session, I want to remind folks, when you come up to the bench, if you'll make sure to lean into the mic, state your name, and give your address. And please keep it to two minutes, because I hate cutting people off. I feel rude and my manners are... You know, a lot of other folks don't see that in me, but I don't like doing that. So if you can pay attention and you see it blinking, that means you got to do that, so I don't have to. When I call your name, if you'll come forward, Jan Angel.
Okay, don't start the timer until I go through it. I need to practice. Thank you for being here this evening and serving our county. Thank you for the opportunity for letting us speak. I'm Jan Angel. I live at 3090 Lake Wiley Drive. I'm one of the residents that lives on the road that goes to Ebenezer Park. My husband and I are the York County Neighborhood Watch liaisons for Lake Wiley Drive. Therefore, I'm speaking on behalf of the constituents that I represent. We have contacted some of you board members. We have contacted the Sheriff's Department. We have tried to go through the proper channels to get some attention brought to some items that have surfaced. The Lake Wiley residents really need your help to resolve some of the issues. We've lived peacefully with Ebenezer Park for many, many years, for decades, and only recently have some of these problems come up. The most evident is the traffic situation. We have such a popular park now that we have cars backing up into Lake Wiley Drive, we have cars backing up into Mount Gallant. It's causing a gridlock. We are hoping that you will look at a traffic study and add an additional lane across from the ranger station to alleviate some of that traffic. And there's some additional studies may be done to sacrifice a few campsites so that there is more parking and there is more room to turn some vehicles around. We have other people that have had close calls with people bringing big pontoon boats down our little street, and they've had to dive into neighbors' front yards. Or, in my case, a guy cut the curve a little too tight, and I literally had to leap backwards because his trailer came right over where I was standing. Our little road was not made for pontoon trucks. We also had a situation with this lovely fishing pier. And in the old days, we had a nice little fishing sink in a place where people could cut their bait and wash their hands, and now it's not there. So they're cutting bait on the picnic tables, they are cutting fish heads off and chucking them into the river, and it's washing back into the fishing area or it's onto people's beaches. So we have a little bit of a hygiene sanitation issue with the fish. We want them to be able to fish and enjoy that time, but it shouldn't be at the expense of other people that come up with their picnic basket and here's this nasty mess on the picnic tables.
Thank you, Jan.
We also would like some additional rangers to maintain the peace at night.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I hate doing that. Don Schaub, I hope I pronounced that correctly.
My name's Don Show. I live at 3138 Lake Wiley Drive, about a half mile down the road from Ebenezer Park. I'm just ponying on top of some of the points that Jan made, I was going to make anyway, so I'll maybe a little bit of time back. The issues as I see them, right now, the traffic is unruly. They're speeding, they're dangerous for a residential neighborhood street that has kids, pets, and golf carts as its normal traffic pattern. The road is a winding, single-lane road, less than 15 feet wide in some places, paved with only an inch of asphalt, and the heavy traffic is destroying what's left of that road. It's checkered, it's alligator already, and the road surface has failed in several areas, and this traffic isn't helping them. For me, my big bone of contention is the trash volume is ridiculous. I walk the road every morning. I pick up a bag of trash, and basically, I pick up a bag of beer cans, food trash, and other garbage that's been thrown out of the people's cars while they're waiting in line or traveling down the road. The no alcohol policy for the park seems to make visitors feel that they should throw their beer cans out of the window before they enter the park. I'm not sure that's really what we wanted. I'm also finding dispose... Finding and disposing of needles and syringes on the side of the road that I think are a hazard to our kids that needs to stop. The last point I had to make is the weekend park visitors frequently block the intersection for Lake Wiley Drive and Boat Shore, which makes it hard for the residents to actually get out of their... Out of Lake Wiley Drive. I guess as requests, and again, I'm a civil engineer, but I'm not a road engineer, please post Lake Wiley Drive for residential traffic only and no trailers. There's no reason, other than local trailers, that we should be having heavy traffic down there. The no weekend, and I think Brandon's already working on this, this no weekend access via Lake Wiley Drive to Ebenezer Park, very smart move, that would help some of the problems we're seeing. Please restrict the weekend traffic from entering the park from Lake Wiley Drive. And if they could please paint a box at the intersection of Lake Wiley Drive and Boat Shore that says, "Don't block the box," or whatever they want to do to keep people from blocking the intersection and queuing up to get in. I appreciate the council listening to me, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Alan Miller.
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman and council members. I'm Alan Miller. My wife, Ravinia, and I live at 3460 Lake Wiley Drive, 30 yards from the guard shack near the only land entrance to Ebenezer Park. In addition, our property directly borders the park, and our four grandchildren live in Rock Hill routinely visit our home and freely roam the area, enjoying the river, the wooded area, and the roads. We've owned our property since 1999, and this is the first time that the park's proximity has become a problem. Without exception, every single person that we've contacted and we've reached out to has been sympathetic to our challenges, and they've been very respectful of our concerns. And although some adjustments have been made, you're probably aware that these problems have been frustrating to not only us, but to the individuals that run your park. But being sympathetic and listening to our concerns doesn't completely fix the problems. If we could fix the problems ourselves, we would. I know most of you individually, I consider all of you friends, and I respect each of you, but with all due respect, York County has got to fix this problem. Like any preferred neighborhood in York County, all of us on Lake Wiley Drive pay very high taxes. We signed up for that, but we did not sign up for two-and-a-half-ton trucks pulling three-to-four-ton rigs barreling down around the streets through our neighborhood. And what retunely is a pedestrian street full of kids, walking dogs, joggers, cyclists, golf carts, and old guys like me that are taking our afternoon exercise walk. Lake Wiley is not your ordinary drive. Locals call it roller coaster road for a good reason. It has narrow pavement with no berms, up and down hills, and blind turns. It is certainly not a good route for large, out-of-state vehicles that don't even know the road. If this was your neighborhood, would you handle... How would you handle these rigs traveling through your neighborhood at speeds that's twice beyond the speed limit? That's what's happening to us, endangering our families every weekend.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you very much, and I could have given you a lot more.
We do allow, just so that you folks know, when we sign up for two minutes, I think Karen does a good job, our clerk to council, to let you know, you get two minutes, and then I have to hold us to that. If you want to get on the agenda, though, at the end, you can have the time that you want, but in order to keep our meeting forward, that's why we have that rule here. I just did want to make that note. But thank you, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Ms. Cott.
I believe that these two gentlemen scratched their name off Leon Yard and John Petrone. If you still want to come forward, you're more than welcome to. Mark Howey. Doranda Patel. I think I say it wrong every time, I'm sorry.
It's Doranda Patel, 2216 India Hook Road, Rock Hill, South Carolina. It's with the rezoning of my convenience store to BD3. The last meeting, I wasn't quite sure how it all works. I wanted to talk then and see if the committee would consider the conditions for the rezoning. I deferred, and I thought I could get a chance to talk later. So I'd just like to say, if you could consider the conditions to be rezoned to BD3, the conditions to be waived. There are two other units, Fish and Tackle Place, that's BD3, it's been BD3 since 1987, and the daycare used to be next to me, that's BD3 since 1987, and now it's... Interior decoration thing. So I'm just asking you guys to just consider this, just automatically rezone me, because it's RC1 and it should be BD3.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. I would encourage you to reach out to your council member and also speak with staff on your way out so that you have some details about how that process would work. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Say.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda is passed. We move now to our public hearings. I have to come back to it. Council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of the County of York, South Carolina, Disposal of Waste at the County Landfill, Chapter 33, Section 50.33B9, in order to provide for an increase in fees for the acceptance of recyclable material delivered to the York County Material Recovery Facility and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Motion in a second to close public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say, as far as, I've really looked into the tipping fee, the cost of service is our biggest problem, and this is nothing more than sharing the expense. This is not something that is trying to eliminate the recycling at all.
Any other discussions, Mr. Roddy?
I just wanted to quickly mention that this was kind of brought up to us several months ago, even before we even started the budget cycle by Public Works. I do recall having a workshop and being informed that if we didn't do something about the tipping fees, that we will now begin to go deeper in the hole and operate in red. So these increases are just what we see as minor adjustments to make sure that our operation somewhat pays for themselves and that we don't run this government, this entity over at the landfill in a negative in the red. So this is an effort for us to stay above board and be fair cost of board with our fees and all, so.
The only thing I would add to that is, I think it's... We should also point out that even with increasing tipping fee, we're still below, well below, the cost to serve. So it's more of a loss mitigation than a profit attempt, so.
Yeah, I'd just like to piggyback off of that also, too, when you look at the cost overall, again, as Brandy was saying, this is a shared cost, but again, you know, even what we would be moving forward with, we're still looking at additional cost above and beyond that. So again, it's a shared cost across the board.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to amend the Code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 51.05, Water and Sewer Rates and Charges, Terms and Conditions of Service, Section B10, in order to amend the sewer rate schedule and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, do we have any discussion? Mr. Roddy?
I just wanted, real quick, for our staff to kind of bring the public up to speed as to why we're starting to see a little more increases across the board in some aspects. We can get county manager or someone with staff to kind of let us... Let the public know how we've gotten to the point of having to ask for this increase, what triggered this.
This specific increase is related to our increase in our wholesale rate with the city of Rock Hill. It's just a... It's really just a pass-through. It's a similar rate adjustment to what they've proposed to us, and it does cover a little bit more than that, as far as some of our costs have increased as well, but it is a direct result of our wholesale rate increasing.
And I want it staff to kind of clear it up, because I don't want the general public to get the idea that, hey, York County's just going up on everything, they're making money hand over fist on its citizens, because that's not the goal that we have here at the county, just to be in the profit-making business while we're providing services to the public. I think it's a fair assessment that if we're in charge, increase for the water and sewer that Rock Hill charges us, that we do have to pass those costs along, and we are not in a profit-making business, as one would maybe lead the public to believe. So I wanted to kind of get that out so that everybody knows where we're at with York County.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to hold a public hearing, amend and approve third reading of an ordinance to the Code of the County of York, South Carolina, Chapter 90.02, Rates, Fees, and Charges for Public Park Facilities, Services, or Sponsorships, in order to establish usage fees for the newly constructed multipurpose event building at Ebenezer Park, to reduce the camping and shelter rental reservation fees, to revise the definition of senior and disability categories, and add active-duty military category for camping rates and season passes, and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement and incentive agreement buying between York County, South Carolina, and TKC, CCL XXXD LLC, and Southwood Corporation, formerly known to the county as Project Recon, with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes, including the provision of certain special source credits and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
We need to do the public hearing first. Do we have... Anyone here who wants to speak in favor? Please come forward. State your name and address.
I'm John Petroni, 4700 Westinghouse Boulevard in Charlotte. Thank you to the York County Council for your time this evening. I'm thrilled to be here tonight. As I said, my name's John Petroni, and I'm the president and CEO of Southwood Corporation, a veteran-owned, 51-year-old turnkey signage and graphics manufacturing business that serves a diverse clientele and geographic footprint. In fact, we've got signs in all 50 states and 29 countries. As you know, we've been looking for the best place to grow and expand our operation. After thorough analysis, we believe that York County and Rock Hill is just that place. Pending a few final approvals, the headquarters, sales, design, and fabrication teams will all relocate to Aspen Business Park. This is a total of 73 jobs and just under a $6.5 million investment for a 60,000-square-foot manufacturing facility. I'd like to thank York County Economic Development Director David Swinson and his team for making us feel wanted and feel like we can become part of the community. I can't stress how important that was to all of us. Thank you to David Vehan and his team at the city, and finally, thank you to all of you, all the York County Council. I look forward to getting to know each of you individually and hosting you all at our new facility here at the end of the year. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Anyone here who wishes to speak against? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Mr. Roddy.
I know I seem a little talkative, maybe the COVID vaccines kind of got me a little jittery and trying to burn off some energy here tonight, but I just wanted to hear from David Swinson, since I see him sitting out in the audience, about the investment level being basically, what, $6.5 million? Are we starting to see a trend that we're offering a little more incentive to the smaller businesses or reducing the minimum investment?
Yeah, I mean, the incentive offered in this one helped address some competitive disadvantages that North Carolina had and we didn't. The incentive, if you look at the tax rate, it's usually about two to three times higher here than in North Carolina, where they were looking and highly considering so, to offer the fee-in lieu with a little bit of extra, put it over the top. It also helped get the Aspen Business Park started. That's a needed business park in the Rock Hill, greater Rock Hill area for small businesses. This park is not going to see... They'll have a couple sites of large projects could go, but a lot of smaller businesses have a chance to go there.
All right. Appreciate the effort.
I just have a question, and I could have looked at my packet, but didn't look. Sorry. What is the... I think they said 73 employees. What is that average salary, not including the executives?
Sure, average annual salary, $57,140 a year. That's the annual average salary.
And you did pick the best location. You did pick the right spot.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none? Oh, we have one. Motion passes, six to one. Thank you for your investment in York County. We look forward to having you here, and we appreciate the jobs that you bring into our citizens. Council to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement buying between York County, South Carolina, and Schaeffler Group USA, comforting formerly identified by the county as Project Bearclaw, with respect to certain economic development property in the county, whereby such property will be subject to certain payments in lieu of taxes and other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Please come forward and state your name and address.
All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Wick. I'm the general counsel and corporate secretary for Schaeffler Group, and I'm here with Jerry Sosu, who's one of our taxing analysts, and then Andy Brownell, with Maxxas Advisors that helps us. Want to give you a little bit of background, if you don't know Schaeffler Group. We're over... We have two plants off of Spring Hill Farm Road. We've got 60 acres, so we make thrust bearings and engine components and linear components. We are the fifth-largest employer that you have in the region and the largest manufacturer. So huge contributor to your tax base. We also have apprentice programs. We've had this one in York County, working with York Tech since 2014, and then recently, we're working with Apprentice Carolina and the governor's office to try to do a pre-apprentice program. So we'll be working with all the local high schools to develop those paths. I know that's sort of near and dear to the governor's heart as well. So some important projects we have going, and we want to thank the county, and we want to thank David, he's helped us. While this isn't bringing in new business, this is good support for existing business, which I think we see is all very important. We're in an incredibly competitive environment, not only within our own region, with our own group companies, but also other automotive companies, just products and things that shift out of the country. So this isn't... This is a fee-in- lieu, so I don't know if there's any questions, concerns. This is also, I just want to... Forgot, this is our America's headquarters, which is also, I think, in Florida, in South Carolina, and great for this region as well. We have large operations throughout the world, but the headquarters for this entire region is right here in Fort Mill. And so I don't know if you've ever been able to tour the facilities. We've obviously had that cut off quite a bit in the last year and a half, but when our CEO said, "The best thing is it sells this company, and its stability in this community is plant tours and having folks come in and see what we do on a day-to-day basis with all these jobs." So we would welcome that anytime. I know David's done it on several occasions. But we've had a lot of investment, I think this is, you know, the third or fourth reason, but we've had hundreds of millions of dollars invested in this community over the last 10, 15 years. So we want to continue that growth with this fee-in- lieu arrangement.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing for the community and the apprenticeship and, you know, the additional work that you're bringing in, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
I would just say, real quick, if you don't mind, if you could send some dates over to
our clerk, I would be interested in coming to take a tour of the facility. I know several people throughout Rock Hill and York County that's employed there, and if I'm not mistaken, the outside, the company name, have you ever heard the name Innobearon?
Oh, yes.
Okay, that's what my friends call it, when you say, "Well, I work at Innobearon," and, you know, now I hear that. I've known it was called Schaeffler Group, but, you know, the word on the... In the community, they refer to it as Innobearon.
Yep. And that was, gosh, been there, was it, since 1983? But the Schaeffler family, that Innobearon was what they called one of our brands, and then we rebranded everything under their actual name over a little bit. But nothing's changed hands, their ownership, it's just, I don't know, maybe it sounds better.
The name on the sign says Schaeffler, but the inside...
The original owners. But no, we'd be happy to arrange that. We just recently, with the world opening up a little bit, are able to have visitors. We didn't have to for a long time, but now we've opened that back up. So, well, I can give my card, I'll pass it along, and then, or David, can help us arrange that. So again, thank you to David and his group and to the county for the continued support, so.
I'd be interested in that as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you again for choosing our county. We welcome you here and appreciate your investment. Council to consider amending and giving third reading of an ordinance to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021, to provide for the levy of taxes for York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2021, to provide for the expenditure of tax revenues and other county funds, and provide for other fiscal matters relating to county government. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion?
I'd like to offer a motion for an amendment. I'd like to offer a motion for an amendment. I'd like to make the motion to reduce the nine million dollar transfer that we're doing out of the general funds to the Capital Reserve Fund by fifty thousand dollars and use those funds to increase the payment to Safe Passage by the same fifty thousand dollars. We had a presentation from them last week and, you know, they are the definition of a quasi-governmental group, in my opinion, or entity. And this is a nice increase to what we usually give them, but, you know, if, when we're talking about how much the transfer is, it's a very small portion of that transfer. And if it can do anything to reduce our numbers of battered spouses and possibly worse for some spouses that York County leads the South in, then it's well worth transferring this amount of money. So I would appreciate the council's support on that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a second to the amendment. Any other discussion?
We need to hear from Kevin.
I think we'll get there. Mr. Madden, now that you're being called on to...
To clarify, you were wanting to reduce the transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund by twenty-five thousand to bring the amount to Safe Passage up to fifty thousand?
No, I was wanting to reduce it by fifty to bring...
By fifty?
To bring the amount to seventy-five.
Okay, but just to make sure it's the transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund, not the Capital Projects Fund, correct? Okay.
I was going to ask a more direct question as to, is this, how does staff view this change in, or shifting the revenue to Safe Passage as something that we would recommend, stand behind, or is this, you know, solely just up to council?
I believe this is going to be council's call. Certainly, the presentation last week was very compelling and I don't have a problem with this motion at all. I just wanted to clarify what's transfer was being reduced.
I think Sheriff Tolson just came in. I had to put him on the spot, but he might can speak to whether or not he supports what Safe Passage is doing.
He was still fixing his hair, Robin, when you walked in. We were discussing it.
I'm certain he's supporting Safe Passage. I'm not sure what particular discussion we're having.
I made the motion...
Maybe after you both have lost.
No, I made the motion to take part of the transfer that we're doing from general fund into our Capital Projects Fund, to take fifty thousand dollars worth of it and increase the money to Safe Passage by fifty thousand dollars this year.
I certainly would be supporting that.
And the reason why I second the motion is because I'm familiar with the good work that Safe Passage is doing in the community. And obviously, it lends a helping hand to women and their families if need be, if they're in a bad situation, a battered situation. You know, we need these entities throughout the community and across the state because it does happen. And thankfully, we have good law enforcement officers and sheriffs and police chiefs in York County that will make sure that they step in and handle the, handle one end, but we need someone also to take care of the victim at the same time. So I'll definitely support transferring those funds over.
Yeah, I would agree to that also, too. I think it's very important that we've recognized this and again, move forward to address and help support these people that are in need, absolutely.
Discussion on the amendment. At this point, we'll vote solely on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment is made.
I would like to offer another amendment. Wasn't sure I could do this one, but I'm going to offer it. So I would like to make a motion to amend the budget to readjust, since we've just approved an amendment to allocate eight million, nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars over to the capital fund from general funds. I would like to make a motion that we now allocate three hundred thousand from the H-Tax Fund, excuse me, from the Capital Projects Fund, since we moved that money last week, it's a different motion now, back to the Visit York County for funding for marketing and events in the unincorporated part of the county.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. And as point of order, I think the motion was made to reconsider, which I think would potentially, I didn't catch the motion beginning, but I think at this point, let's go ahead and debate the motion and let's, I think he framed it in a way where it's a separate motion that does not have the reconsideration.
That's what I was trying to technically do, is not to revoke that amendment. I'm trying to bring up a separate amendment tonight with, since we found out that we have eight point nine million dollars going into a fund that we thought was underfunded last month and needed three hundred thousand dollars worth of help or last time. I'm trying to frame this as a separate motion to fund three hundred thousand to Visit York County for the marketing and unincorporated. And I'm not a lawyer, so the technicality of how I did it may not be exactly right, but that's what I'm trying to do, is to form it that way.
If the motion is a new motion to move funding, then I think this is a, we can debate this.
Yes, I would agree with that.
Any discussion?
I think, like I said, the big thing to me is just, you know, we were talking about the three hundred thousand, it's a different motion, but what we're talking about is three hundred thousand dollars that we moved in the last, in the second reading. The reason I brought it back up is because I've determined with the last email from staff that we were moving this large chunk of money from general fund over to the same Capital Projects Fund that we put this three hundred thousand in to help us because we were a little short on some of the capital projects over the next ten years. And so I think this three hundred thousand could be, you know, better spent by taking that portion from what we're doing in this fund and moving it back to there. It's a little cloudy on some of this, but I think that's, you know, it's not that that fund is short if we're moving almost nine million dollars into it tonight, so.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to know if it's a one-time transfer. This isn't something set up as previous where it was coming from H-Tax. This would just be a one-time transfer, right?
I have a...
Mr. Roddy.
I did, I'm glad staff cleared this up because I thought that the only person that could bring up a motion for reconsideration was one that who was on prevailing side, not one that was on the dissenting side, but since that was cleared up by staff. I'll just offer to comment that my support for not funding the additional three hundred thousand to CVB wasn't just because we could use it to help pay down something else. My support to ultimately pull the three hundred thousand was because we were given the same amount of money in the budget going forward this year as they actually spent last year. And, you know, when we cut the budget the prior year, our exact words to the CVB and its operators was that you'll be fine because we see York County growing. We see those programs and those revenues keeping up with what we were pulling. And we all said it, we all stood here a couple weeks ago and commended the CVB for doing such an outstanding job of growing these funds, growing these revenues. And I know it was kind of bittersweet, but we, anytime we can move a program off of government money and run it on private money, that's the way that you should want to do it. You know, obviously, could he do more advertising with three hundred thousand dollars more? Absolutely. But could we better use and start other things with the same tax dollars from that program and start up something else that could possibly grow and sustain itself? We went through a thing several years ago with cutting out funding a lot of nonprofits. We were moving in the direction of getting more programs off of your tax dollars, and here's an opportunity for us to do that. And some people are still wanting to pump more tax dollars. And at the same time, I do recognize that these are funds that people, when they visit restaurants, when they visit hotels, and they come to York County, they're spending money. But it's our fiduciary responsibility to make sure we best utilize that fund, those funds. And if we can shift money from being on the backs of the taxpayer to another program that could ultimately grow itself into being self-sustaining, I think we should, and it's our duty to go down that road. And I said two weeks ago that if this doesn't work out the way we do it on paper, because I've been a part of companies that chart a course on paper and it doesn't work out, and we go back and fix it. And I've said up here, we have many opportunities where if things don't work out the way we chart them on paper, then we can go back and fix it. We're not locked into a forever and ever when we make a decision. If something's not working, we always have the latitude to come back and undo it. And I think we're all men and women enough to admit when we're wrong and things don't work out. So let's don't be too quick to say we're not doing what's right with the taxpayers' dollars, because I think we're trying to do the best we can with the taxpayers' dollars. And it doesn't always work out. And we all know that York County is growing. More people are visiting here, more people are coming here. It's a wonderful place that we live, it's a great place, that's why people want to visit here. And ultimately, when people visit here, they like it so much, they find a reason to come back and move their whole family. They find a reason to come back here and retire. So let's don't be too quick to say what we're doing won't work. It's on paper as being able to work. And I've given my word, I've been a huge supporter of CVB for the last ten years. But now I see an opportunity to shift some of those funds to another program that we can maybe grow from the ground up and be successful. Billy's going to be successful at the CVB because York County is a successful county, Rock Hill is a successful city, Lake Wile is a successful city, Fort Mill is successful. So when you put all that success under one belt, we have no choice but to be successful. And Billy knows it, his staff knows it, we got a good thing going and he's going to be all right. He's created some programs, is bringing in some great revenue. Let us use these revenues somewhere else to do some other great things. And if it doesn't work out, and if it's the Lord's will, if I'm still here, we'll refund that program of what we've cut it short. So let's don't, let's don't do too much damage in thinking that we're not doing the right. Let's don't second guess ourselves with what we're doing up here. The only thing we should be concerned about is we're given another opportunity somewhere else to grow with taxpayers' dollars. And that's why I'm supporting not to fund that additional revenue, because the budgets going forward in 2021 is almost exactly the same as what the organization spent all of last year.
Yeah, I'd just like to follow up on Bump. You know, I completely agree, Bump. You know, again, when we were talking through this, you know, Billy's done a great job with developing the Destination Fee Program. It was a very, very good program and it allowed us an opportunity to move forward with transferring and moving these revenues over to a capital expenditure program that would help alleviate the cost for our residents and actually save some tax dollars. As you move forward and with the ability of Billy's program, he was able to raise enough of revenue in order to offset, you know, the effects of the three hundred thousand, as Bump was saying, and would even have additional revenues left over. So again, I think it's a win-win situation for both the taxpayers and York County in general. So again, that's why I was in support of it and continue to support that.
I did not support pulling the funds from the CVB initially, specifically because it was due to H-Tax. However, I cannot support a one-time transfer of the funds. To me, this is just doing nothing but putting a Band-Aid, it's not solving the issue. What I saw the CVB doing was a good return on investment and just simply transferring the funds every one time, we're going to be back in the same situation next year. So it just doesn't make sense to me.
So I initially also did not support pulling funding from the CVB because to me, it's just absurd to pull funding from something that's actually generating a return on taxpayer dollars just to put the money in a piggy bank. Councilman Roddy mentioned, we do have a fiduciary duty to use the taxpayer funds to their best, highest and best use. And I think any investment professional such as Robert would agree that even in your own household, if you have something that's generating a substantial return year after year, you don't pull from that and just put that money in savings for no reason. However, you know, I have to agree with Brandon that this is, you know, one-time Band-Aid. Billy, you've done a phenomenal job. I believe that, you know, the CVB deserves taxpayer funding, especially from the H-Tax because it's people coming here due to your efforts that spend that money to generate more of it. However, I agree with Brandon that this is probably just a one-time solution. We're going to be back here next year. I think we need to figure out a permanent, long-term solution that allows the CVB to continue to do what they do best, which is attract people to a county that is very attractive and has a lot to offer. And it's very marketable and they do a fantastic job marketing it. And I want to make sure that we continue the discussion on how to figure that out long-term, that works best for everyone in the county. Unfortunately, I just don't think that this particular motion is that, so.
I think we're looking for a solution to a problem that doesn't exist and won't exist. The irony, one of the top restaurants for hospitality dollars is in my district, it's Papa Dog's, used to be T-Bones. And the one thing that the CVB talks about that they bring to my district is fishing tournaments. If I could tell you, and Sheriff Tolson can tell you, both of us can tell you this week, the battle between Papa Dog's and the fishermen is unreal because there's not enough parking for everybody. So at the last council meeting, when we discussed this, I made the comment that we didn't need more visitors in Lake Wile. And we do need more visitors in the City of Rock Hill. That's very different. And I go back to the old formula of the City of Rock Hill giving eighty thousand dollars and the county giving eight hundred thousand dollars. It's just not the right ratio. So I didn't vote to take away the three hundred thousand dollars because we need it somewhere else. I voted to take that away because I don't feel like it is fair to everyone, not fair, but equitable to everyone in the county. And I want to bring up one more thing because this is a big concern of mine. Councilman Winkler, you said at the last meeting that had you known how this council was going to treat Billy Dunlap, that you maybe would not have offered him the job and you were on that committee, that hiring committee? That is a conflict of interest from the get-go. And I feel like it's a personal thing and that bothers me a great deal. I don't know why a council member was ever on a hiring committee like that. I don't understand that. I don't know that we've ever done anything else like that. But it concerns me because the district that you represent probably gets the very least from the CVB. So, I mean, I'm happy to talk to you about that outside of this, but that's a big concern of mine. I've struggled to figure out where the support came from and I think that, I think we heard that. And so, you know, I don't support it, I don't support a one-time thing, I don't support the three hundred thousand. I mean, Billy Dunlap is a, he is a professional. He will, he will, I hope that, I hope that those of us who vote, no, in a year or so are the ones who have, can say, you know what, we're actually the ones that made you better because you had to go out and find ways. And you're not really having to look real hard this year because your budget is pretty much the same. You've got the same dollars. We're not taking, not really taking funding, but I want to be one of the people that you come to in a year or so and say, you know what, Allison, you're right. I mean, there were times when I wanted to buy a new car and my parents made me pay for it. And that's what, that's how I feel about this. So I'm a definite no in case you can't tell.
Typically, what we do is we go through this round once and we've had this discussion several times, but since you did point out a direct comment, I'll allow Mr. Winkler to respond and then I'll speak and we'll wrap this up.
And I'm not going to make it as personal as I could, but I do not appreciate my ethics being called in to challenge when I know something that went on with the people that applied for that and you in an application that could call to some ethics and discussion as well.
I did apply for that? We're not going to have the back and forth. We're not going to have the back and forth. And I'll wrap up the discussion for purposes of voting on the amendment. I think that we've had this discussion numerous times. I'm not going to go through all of the rationale for the reasons why I don't support the motion other than I just believe that government shouldn't subsidize an organization that can learn and can fund itself privately. And I think that's what we have to be focusing on, so I will not support the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No. The amendment does not pass. Do we have any other discussion on, you're done? Okay. Are there any other, any other discussion about the budget? Mr. Roddy.
I just want to make a quick comment on what I've seen over the years with our budget and, you know, going back ten years ago when I first got on council, seeing how the budget process worked for the very first time and knowing some of the issues that were going on with York County at the time. When I first got on council, there hadn't been any raises given to employees for three or four years. We quickly tried to address that. We found ways to be creative with the budget, to make sure we took care of the people that worked for us. We quickly tried to address that, we found ways to, to be creative with the budget, to make sure we took care of the people that work for us and who are ultimately the face of our organization. And over the years, that's one of the things that I've kind of made a, a, a real good sticking point. And what I wanted to see, first off, in the budget is how are we treating our employees? Because these are the people that serve the public, these are the people that you see when you go into the office, these are the people that answers our phones, these are the people that, that respond to our emergency calls. And, and through that, you know, you can't help but wonder, if we weren't taking care of our employees, how many of them would wake up each and every morning and be proud to come work and put that logo on their t-shirt or their polo shirt and go out in this community and represent them? So one of the things I've always looked for, and, and it's a testament to Kevin, every time he works up a budget for us, he knows what the first thing I'm gonna ask him, what are we doing for our employees? Do our employees, um, are we taking care of our employees? Because we don't want to be a training ground for employees coming here, working for several years, getting experience and going out to the private sector. That's the one thing we don't want to do, we've seen it happen during my tenure on council. And that's one of the things that make this organization such a great outfit to be a part of, is because we try to take care of our employees. You know, you don't come to county government to, um, to build a million dollar home. You come to county government to, to make a, a good living, provide a service, and you know we're not going out of business. We're not moving to, to Mexico and, and, and run this government. We're gonna be right here in York County providing a, a good livable wage that anyone can come here, start out, make a career, have a decent retirement, and, and you're right here at home. There's so many families here who, who've grown up here, who still reside here. Even though we have a lot of transplants of people moving here, their kids are growing up here now, seeing that the opportunity exists with this government outfit. So I'm, I'm real pleased to, to, to say that for the last several years, we've made a conscious effort to make sure we take care of our employees. And I think that's a true testament to the men and women that sit up here and the men and women who work for this outfit that will continue to do right by them as well as the citizens who we're, we're taxing and taking care of your money, so. Thank you.
I just, I want to reiterate that, I think we've got a great county management team. And, um, I think they, they first look out for the employees. And, um, I think council recognizes that our employees are our, they're our biggest asset in York County. You know what, happy, happy employees make for a happy, happy workday and a happy workday makes for a happy county and, and for, for happy, happy constituents and residents. So I think that's very important. One of the things that I want to, to especially, um, just express, I guess gratitude for is that, um, Animal Control is on that list this year to get some, to, to get some things done. You know, if, if we had to walk into that job that they do every day, we, most of us, probably Sheriff Tolson might last because he's got a pretty hard job too. But most of us couldn't handle the job that those people at Animal Control do. So I'm, I'm excited that they're gonna get a little better facility and a little more attention. And, and I just think that's very important because that's infrastructure for the county.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I want to say, uh, with me being the newest member up here, Tom as well, but no, Tom's had experience with the budget, with the school board. I was very thankful for the job that management's done, council members, sheriff, department heads, just being able to reach out, answer any questions, um, been on the phone sometimes past 11 o'clock at night, getting questions answered. So I really do appreciate it and I think county's worked really hard on this budget and proud of it.
Any other comments?
I just want to say that, you know, if you look around the country, you may see a little bit of madness going on with municipal and government budgets. But in York County, we've had a budget delivered to this council from a staff that can defend every dollar and every cent that's being spent in a way that provides a, a service to our citizens. And the net result is a budget that attempts to, to burden our citizens as minimally as possible and still exceed their exception, or their expectations for service. So I'm grateful for staff and I'm grateful for this council, as I believe we're fixing to approve this budget, for sending the message that this county is, is managed responsibly. And I think that the result of that is we have businesses like we saw tonight that are interested in coming here and providing opportunity for our citizens. So thank you all for everything you do.
Yeah, I'd like to just piggyback off of that too. I, I would also like to thank the, uh, you know, the staff county on your approach of how you look at the budget from a fiscally sound perspective. It, it, it attracts businesses and it brings, and it, and it builds strength in the community and the county. So again, I do want to applaud you for it and thank you.
Any other discussion? Well, I certainly do appreciate our staff and our county citizens for coming out and being a part of this process. One of the top priorities of a council is to make sure that you pass a budget that you can defend and that your taxpayers can be proud of. And, and I think that this is a good budget, I think it looks out for our taxpayers and it also has some exciting things in it so that we can move forward with planning for much-needed areas of the county. We continue to have a AAA tax rating thanks to the good leadership that we have in management and, um, those things and stable reserves, um, all, we should all be very thankful for that, very proud for that. York County is an excellent place to live. I'm born and raised here, so I'm a little bit biased, but I, I see great things happening. I see, um, I see our county moving forward. And I, we've had some spirited debates about some items on, on this agenda amongst council. And I think that's great because I think it shows that we're not a rubber stamping group. We're gonna get out and we're gonna give our opinion and we've done that. But I do support this and I appreciate all the effort that went into it. There is no general fund, um, general tax increase and so I think the, the citizens should appreciate that as well. All those in favor of approving the budget, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes six to one. We don't have any new business, no committee reports. Any council member new non-agenda comments? Mr. Roddy?
I just want to go back and, and touch on something that we all just went through and, and you just mentioned, alluded to it, that this council, we've taken some tough votes, we, we've made some tough decisions, and we don't always side with each other. And I think that's the beauty of what we have here at York County versus what we see in other places, that we don't have to agree with each other to be effective, we don't have to agree with each other just to make certain things happen. Uh, we all have, we all represent the constituency of York County. We may be on a different side sometimes, but at the end of the day, uh, it's for the betterment and it's for the good of this county. And I love being a part of a group that you don't feel like you have to shelter your opinion, your thoughts and your views. You can, you can come here and represent your district and still represent the county. And at the end of the day, if we were all leaving, going to the same place, we would all probably order the same beer, the same drink and the same food. And by the way, we still, uh, we still do a, a night out amongst ourselves to kind of do that in, in that kind of atmosphere. But it's, it's a great feeling knowing that I don't have to just go along with my counterpart or my colleague to my right or my left to feel like I'm doing the right thing. You know, we all have a, a strong opinion about certain issues and we can express them and it, and it's not on a personal level. It's, we're here to do a job, we're here to do, take care of the people's business. And at the end of the day, when we walk out, we're making phone calls and asking each other about the family, about the friends, what they're doing over the weekend. And I think that's a, a true testament of what we've built here with this council, even with, with two new members coming on this year. They've, they've stepped right in and feel right at home and I think we're doing a good job of bringing them along and they're, they're also contributing to what we're doing here. So I just wanted to kind of put that in the atmosphere that, that, um, it's good to be up here with, with this, this group.
Any other?
Yeah, I, go ahead.
Mr. Winkler?
I just have one quick comment. I got a text during the meeting from a constituent asking me if I would ask our sheriff and our management if there's any law against, any rules against someone coming on someone else's property and pulling up their survey markers and stuff on their property. And so I have a constituent that that has happened to. I think Sheriff Tolson's already been in touch with this particular constituent. But, um, I was texted to ask if I would ask management and the sheriff to look into if there is any law against that or if it's trespassing or something for someone coming onto their property and pulling up, um, survey markers, so. Thank you.
Way to grab that captive audience right there. Mr. Aldette?
Yeah, so I do have a committee update real quick, um, in regards to our, our fats and CMAC and TAPS. CMAC and TAPS is our, um, funding that we utilize from state level around sidewalks, bike paths, et cetera. In our last TAPS and CMAC meeting, there was, uh, a very nice movement that happened in regards to three projects. One in TK that will extend a side, uh, bike path sidewalk all the way down to the new Kataba Park there building, which will also tie into a thread trail. Uh, and the next thing is that there's gonna be, um, some sidewalks on Fort Mill that will be added in parallel to some schools, uh, on Kataba, Kataba Ridge School, which is part of your district right there. And the last piece is that we have sidewalks, um, also going in and some lights going in in Rock Hill. So again, there's gonna be other ways of getting around in some of these communities outside of driving, so that's good news. I wanted to share it with everybody. Thank you.
Mr. Aldette, any other comments?
Yes.
Yeah, Brandon?
Yeah, I just wanted to say the hardest thing for me being up here is hearing public comment at the beginning and not being able to ask questions or address issues. So whenever, uh, especially, I think just about everyone that spoke tonight was in my district, it came up. I did want to just let everyone know that we have been working hard with management, Mr. Moore, Sheriff's Department, Pat out at Ebenezer Park. So we are trying to address the issue and trying to come up with a solution that's gonna be best for everyone involved.
Any other?
Yeah, I just, I want to bring up one thing that I would like to, um, have the Finance and Operations Committee maybe take a look at if council will, will approve for a discussion. We've had this discussion in the past and I just want to give an example of, um, what I consider a very important seat not being filled. On March the 31st, an at-large member of the Planning Commission, um, came off of the Planning Commission. It's March the 31st, it is, um, gonna be June the 21st before the Finance and Operations Committee members look at applications for this, um, which means that it would come to council July 5th. And we only meet once in July, um, in August. And so that means that it would come to council in July. They would be, um, sworn in, voted on for council in, um, July, actually, yeah, the end of September before that person would ever take their seat on the Planning Commission. So that is, um, six months without one of our nine people on the Planning Commission. So what, what I would like to, um, propose, and I'm gonna just say it here, not at the Finance and Operations Committee meeting, is that, um, maybe we have a way for Karen to tell us when we have 30 days before someone on in an, in an at-large seat or someone in our district, um, before a seat is gonna open up on these, um, committees. And then we have 30 days to look for someone, um, either all of us on council looking countywide for someone or in our district looking for a, a seat that is open. And then we advertise that 30 days to the public and then it comes to Finance and Operations. So, so there's a maximum of 60 days before, a maximum of 60 days without somebody on that Board or Commission. I'm sorry, a maximum of 30 days before Finance and Operations hears it. So the 30 days prior to the opening, because we know in advance when that's happening most of the time. And then 30 days to advertise it before it comes to the Finance and Operations Committee. Because to me, six months without someone on the Planning Commission, whether it's an at-large member or a district person, is just way too, that's, that's a gap as far as I'm concerned.
I'm happy to bring it up, Finance.
Bring it up, thank you. Any other comments from council? We do still have, um, someone who's sitting with us, a Ms. Trisha Conway. She's gonna address council about Ebenezer Park and she waited so that she could have more than two minutes.
Uh, I was here a couple of weeks ago talking about Ebenezer Park, how fantastic it's turned out to be. But when you come in or out of the park, it's a major problem. I live in the boat shore community and when they can't find a place to park in the park, they come out Boat Shore Road and they walk or drive, I should say, into the boat shore community and they park on Painted Lady. By the way, I'm 749 Painted Lady Court, I forgot to mention that. Um, but there has been an exchange, uh, it's attracting all kinds of people from all kinds of states. We have RVs, boats, jet skis. There is a lovely basketball, volleyball, uh, fishing and swimming that has become very popular. And, uh, they do dissect their bait and leave all the mess on the tables in the park. Uh, and unfortunately, um, the parking is just not sufficient. Uh, there's even a gentleman on Dockside that has turned his front lawn into a parking lot. I don't know what he charges them, but every Sunday and part of Saturday, he'll have anywhere of 12 to 15 cars on his front lawn. So he's being very aware also. And the, um, uh, there are reserved spots for parking for those who rent the pavilions and the shelters. And that takes up almost 45 spots if all the shelters are rented. And as Pat Morrison said to me, there's no guarantees of what time they will arrive. So we have to keep those spaces available. But I was talking to several people who were at the pavilions and they were just parking in whatever empty spot they came to. So then the cone places that they're supposed to go to are still unoccupied. And when it's unoccupied and they can't find a place to park, then they come down Boat Shore and they park into whatever Pier 51 has been bombarded with cars. Boat Shore Community has been bombarded with cars. It's, it's just not fun, it's not fair and it's not good. So we have to, we have to work on this. Uh, I do have one suggestion about that. Uh, on Boat Shore Road, uh, there is a no stop sign from the park all the way up to Mount Gallant. So what if we put a stop sign at Dockside so that those racing boat trailing vehicles have a place to stop halfway down the road to control traffic a bit? It's just an idea because you all have sent sheriff officers, three of them this past weekend, two last weekend. This weekend in particular, there was a gentleman who positioned himself at Dockside Road, Dockside Drive on Boat Shore Road. And as cars were coming and vehicles were coming off of Mount Gallant, he stopped them and he would direct them. If there was no spaces available, he would say, I'm sorry, but there's nothing or nowhere for you to park and they would go. But if they had a reservation, whether it was a camper, an RV, a boat or, um, just a, going to a party at one of the pavilions, you all had reservations and it was great. And so it was less crazy, but as you can see from the pictures, it's still crazy. And in the next picture, it shows what it looks like from the guardhouse all the way up on Boat Shore Drive. And that was just this past weekend. Memorial Weekend was a different story altogether. It continued and it continued and it went all the way up to Monarch Drive, which is the only accessible entrance and exit to Boat Shore Community. So there was a number of people who couldn't get in, couldn't get out. And, um, those who got impatient with waiting for, uh, to go down the line would drive into Boat Shore. And this is a community where kids play on bikes, skateboards. There are members who walk the streets for exercise. We are inactive, but we're a family-oriented community and we can't have this kind of chaos, basically is what it comes down to. And, um, so if you all would help, take, help us all, it would be helpful. He's a very good guy helping, Mr. Moore. But we do need more, more work to have things completed.
Thank you, Ms. Conway.
Thank you.
We appreciate your comments and glad you got to see a council meeting from start to finish.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do. Move that we go into executive session for the receipt of legal advice regarding blue granite water service. Also a contractual matter, intergovernmental agreement with the City of York, as well as the receipt of legal advice regarding another contractual matter relating to housing municipal inmates.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor, say aye. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move into executive session. We'll give it to 7:15 and then we'll need to clear out this room because we have to have just legal counsel in here with us. Session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We have one motion, authorize county legal counsel to retain outside counsel as discussed in executive session regarding housing municipal inmates.
Second.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion and?
Second.
A second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.